I want to really thank you all for showing up for this presentation. One of the things I want to mention is this is about water quality, the weed issue, and those problems that we have as far as harvesting, the city's looking into harvesting, and also into another contractor to do any spraying that we need done. We were all disappointed. Everybody in town was disappointed on the job that we had or that we received from the last contractor, and so that's going back out for bid. One of the things I want to let people know, we did not use the contractor that we've had in the past who did a really good job with the treatment of the water. That gentleman unfortunately had passed away, and so we had to go with another contractor, and we were not happy with the results on that. So anyway, that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Becky, and she's going to discuss a few things, and then Herrera's got a presentation for us, and we'll take questions afterwards. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here for our freshwaterways update from Herrera Environmental. Herrera is our consultant that was hired to develop our freshwaterways master plan, which is going to focus on the toxic algae blooms. That's what the focus of tonight's meeting is going to be, and additional information on the sampling that Herrera has done over the past year. Herrera is also developing a storm drain utility rate study for the city, and they'll be presenting potential funding mechanisms for the storm rates as well as future projects for the freshwaterways. And again, tonight Katie will be discussing the toxic algae blooms. We have Katie and Jamie here from Herrera, and Clark is online with us. And as the mayor said, the treatment of the waterways was performed by a different company that was Northwest Aquatic Management, and that was specifically for weed control, separate than the toxic algae blooms that we also have seen an increase of. The city is also looking at additional harvesting, as the mayor said, potentially, so that the goal is that we could do harvesting throughout the year and not have to work within a fish window for the harvesting piece. So that is something to keep an eye out for in the future. And I will, with that, turn it over to Katie.
Thanks, Becky. Thanks so much for the warm welcome, everybody. So my name is Katie Sweeney Rodriguez. I'm here from Herrera Environmental Consultants. I'm an environmental scientist, and thanks again so much for everyone for being here today. Jamie and I spent all day outside collecting the final set of samples. So again, we were able to tour around Ocean Shores, and we're just reminded again of how beautiful it is, especially when the sun is shining. It was a really beautiful day out there. Hopefully, some of you got to enjoy some of that sunshine. We certainly did. So again, thanks so much for everyone for being here tonight. And with that, I think we can get started. So this project is to develop a plan for improving the water quality in the freshwaterways of Ocean Shores. And we could just, I'm sure we're working on making that a little full screen and moving on. But as you can see here, one of the great things we were able to do is go out and tour the waterways of Ocean Shores, you know, being able to see all of those lakes and canals. This photo here was taken at Lake Minard, and it was just an absolutely beautiful day out there. Still working on it. That's okay. There we are. Amazing. Thank you so much. So I think we can progress forward. So just as a reminder of why we're all gathered here today, there was already a little bit of introduction about this, but we're here today to talk about the water quality and the lakes and canals around Ocean Shores. We're here specifically to talk about those toxic algae blooms that I know all of you have seen out there. They can sometimes look a little bit like this, and you know, it's very thick, very green, very pea soupy, can sometimes be really smelly out there, and that's just not something that we want around, right? There's also the concern about aquatic plants around the canals and waterways. I won't be speaking to that today, but I can certainly touch on where management of harmful algal blooms interacts with management of plants just a little bit. So again, but today, most of today's presentation will be discussing the water quality and those toxic algae blooms. Oh, and for the purpose of today's presentation, when I mention toxic or harmful algae, I'm using this term to be synonymous with what we call cyanobacteria, which is that specific form of algae that produces those toxins. So I'll be using some of those terms interchangeably. And as a reminder of the goals for this project, our overall goal for this is to develop a comprehensive and science-based plan to guide the public and private investment for the benefit of humans and wildlife and environmental health throughout the freshwaterways of Ocean Shores. And to get us there, some of the objectives, we're going to develop some management goals. You know, what are we aiming for? We can be specific and quantitative about what these goals should be. We're evaluating the current conditions and causes that impair human and ecological uses in the freshwaterways, and we're identifying those actions, like different projects and policies that can support achieving those water quality goals. So for today's talk, I'm going to be speaking quite a bit, but there's going to be some time to interjects where I want to hear from you all in the audience about your thoughts and ideas. I will start out talking a little bit about the background of the project and of Ocean Shores generally, the past studies that have been done, and then I'll move on to discussing the preliminary results that we have from the monitoring that's been done through 2024 and the early parts of 2025. Again, we were just out there today collecting the last set of samples, so we don't have quite all of the data back, but we have a good chunk of it, and I'm excited to share those with you a little bit later. I'll move into preliminary management options in the last half of today's talk. And again, I want to hear from you all about some of those, with some of those ideas. And then I'll finally move into discussing a little bit more about the structure of the freshwaterways management plan, what you can expect from that, and overall next steps in the project. So algae blooms are nothing new in Ocean Shores. I'm sure some long-time residents can speak to that. The algae blooms can date back to, you know, construction of the canals and, you know, potentially previously in the ponds and lakes that were around before the area was really developed. And even all the way back then, the total phosphorus, which is the primary nutrient fueling algae growth in these ponds, lakes, and canals, was also, was pretty high. So here we have noted that it was 130 parts per billion, which is, you know, contextually pretty, pretty high. And so we can advance. In the 1990s, to address some of these issues, which had, you know, already arisen, you know, just like you, the community at that time, you know, noticed harmful algae blooms and wanted to do something about it, also the aquatic plants. So KCM was brought in to study Duck Lake and the other canals and lakes. Some of their key findings of this 1990s study, the first was that the freshwaterways in Ocean Shores are eutrophic to hypereutrophic, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that means here in a moment. And secondly, they found that there are abundant nutrients and algae growth, which are likely limited by light or other nutrients. So not just phosphorus, but potentially other nutrients like iron. So as promised, lake trophic state, there are, you know, three main classes, and I previously mentioned a fourth one, so there's oligotrophic, mesotrophic, oh, pardon me, eutrophic, and even hypereutrophic. And so what lake trophic state is essentially telling us as a term, it's a measure of the productivity of freshwaterways. So what I mean by productivity is how much biological activity there is, you know, how much photosynthesis is going on. And so that can be, we usually use this in terms of the amount of algae that's growing in the system, but this is a general way to assess a lake's health in a general productivity level. And so at one end of the scale, we have oligotrophic lakes, and those can be typically more nutrient poor. There's not a ton of algae growth in those types of lakes. Those are pretty common in mountainous areas, in those alpine lakes. Whereas on the other end of the scale, where you have eutrophic and hypereutrophic lakes and freshwaterways, that's where there's a lot of productivity happening. There's a lot of photosynthesis and a lot of algae growth occurring. And then right there in the middle, we have mesotrophic, just somewhere in the middle, you know, kind of productive. And so there are a few indices that help us understand what state the waterways and lakes can be in, you know, which class it falls under. If you click the next button, the first one is total phosphorus. So I mentioned this earlier, phosphorus is one of the primary limiting nutrients controlling the growth of algae. So we take the summertime mean of the total phosphorus measurements from water bodies, and that tells us how productive a lake might be. That's one of the indicators. So we'll see that here in the graph at the bottom, where total phosphorus increases, you get those more eutrophic and hypereutrophic conditions, you know, just really productive systems. Click next. The second metric is chlorophyll A. And chlorophyll A is a pigment produced by algae and everything that, you know, photosynthesizes to be able to exchange and turn light into sugars for themselves and grow. And we're interested in chlorophyll A because it can give us a rough measurement of how much algae there is in a system. You know, we can measure how many pigments there are. That gives us an idea of, you know, how many cells and, you know, just how much growth there is overall. And so this is important, just like total phosphorus. It can give us an idea of how productive a system is. And again, in the graph at the bottom, we see that the higher the chlorophyll A, the more eutrophic the system. And finally, the last metric is called seci depth, and this refers to the instrument that we're using. Seci depth is a measure of water clarity. And so we use a seci disc, and it's inserted into the waterway from the top down. We're essentially trying to see how far down in the water we can, you know, see the disc until it disappears, and that gives us a measure of how clear the water is. And for the more eutrophic systems, we would expect not to see that disc very far down in the water, right? You know, like expecting lots of stuff in the water getting in the way of being able to see that disc. So in eutrophic systems, this number is going to be significantly lower, as you'll see in this bottom graph, right? So higher clarity, higher seci disc is those less productive systems in, you know, more clear systems in those oligotrophic lakes. So those are the three main, you're good. Those are the three main indices that I'll be talking about later on when I'm discussing our monitoring results from this past year. And just to give a little bit more context too, about productivity in freshwater systems, eutrophication, I mentioned eutrophic and hypereutrophic lakes. Eutrophication is the process where the freshwaterways have become nutrient-induced, and this increases the amount of algae productivity and algae biomass in a system. And I want to note here too, it's important to understand that plants and algae, they're both aquatic plants, they're both using nutrients and light to grow in the same way. And so there are trade-offs. The more algae you might have, the less rooted aquatic plants you might have, and that can switch to where the more rooted aquatic plants you have, for instance, maybe the less algae you have. So there is sort of a continuum here, which is represented on the graph here to the right. So in the bottom-left area of this graph, we see a lot of rooted plants. But as a system becomes more eutrophic, so moving along that x-axis to the right and to the top-right of that graph, we see waterways that become more eutrophic. There's more nutrients in a system. Those move toward systems that are more dominated by algae and algae and floating plants. And so these are the systems that we see lots of cyanobacteria proliferating. So I just kind of want to let you know to keep that in the back of your mind. These are things that we are going to be considering moving forward when considering different types of management strategies and making sure that we strike a fine balance between algae and aquatic plant growth and the freshwaterways. And this is our very general estimation of where Ocean Shores fits. And of course, all of the canals and lakes are all very different, which I'll speak to here again in a moment. But generally, we see that, again, the systems are very eutrophic. There's a lot of algae going on, growing, but there's also a fair amount of aquatic plants. A lot of those are floating aquatic plants, but that contrasts too with any rooted plants as well. And KCM evaluated all of these metrics back in the 1990s. They particularly evaluated phosphorus sources. And this gets to my third and final key finding that KCM found in the 1990s is that in terms of phosphorus sources, which they measured several throughout the city of Ocean Shores, most of the water and most of the phosphorus in the waterways is actually entering via groundwater. So these are all of the sources of phosphorus they measured. They looked at Clover Creek, what's coming in through Oya Hut Creek, internal loading within the canals and waterways themselves, such as from sediment. And then they looked at groundwater and precipitation and Duck Creek. And out of all of these sources, they found that the shallow groundwater aquifers were providing most of the phosphorus in the system. So what we want to know today, KCM studied all of these really great things back in the 1990s. What we want to know are what are the current conditions of freshwaterways in Ocean Shores? You know, what's going on today? And have conditions here improved or worsened since 1994? There's been a lot of work done since then, has that work resulted in improvements? So starting in July of last year, in 2024, we began water quality monitoring projects. And exactly, yeah, so we decided to revisit some of those KCM monitoring sites from the 1990s. I have a slide on where those are all at here in a moment. But we evaluated water quality in those creek sites that I mentioned, such as Oya Hut Creek and Duck Creek. And we also went back out into the canals and lakes to measure water quality at those stations. And what I mean by evaluating water quality, oh, I'll get to that in a second. Yeah, so we'd measured water quality at eight stations in July, September, and November, and then we came back out again, such as we did today, to measure more water quality parameters in the lakes and the streams and some of the drains around all of these waterways. And we've collected all of those information in dry weather and wet weather too, so we can get a broad sense of where inputs are coming and how they might seasonally vary. And so I know that these maps are a little difficult to see. On the left-hand side, we see those sites that were monitored by KCM in the 1990s. There's several of them, and we tried to go back to as many of them as we could this time around as well. So on the right side are all of the sites that we went to today. Again, I know it's really hard to see. You don't have to read all that. But we did go to a lot of those sites. The ones in blue are sort of the canal and lake sites, and the, I think, ones in green and yellow, excuse me, are those watershed sites. So at each of these sites, we measured a variety of parameters in both the lake and canal systems and in the creek watershed sites. We measured some common parameters. So these things included physical parameters like temperature, and we looked at the dissolved oxygen, pH, and of course nutrients. We wanted to see what's coming in and what's already in the freshwaterways. And we also measured additional parameters unique to the lake and canal locations. These included the chlorophyll A, which, as I mentioned, is that algae pigment. We measured water clarity by using the seci depth again. We also took specific samples to look at what species of toxic algae, what species of cyanobacteria we're seeing at each of these sites. You know, do they differ? And how much cyanobacteria are we seeing at a given time? And we measured lake level. For the watershed sites, those creeks and drains, we additionally measured E. coli as a bacteria indicator. We measured total suspended solids, you know, what's the stuff floating around in the water? You know, how many solids are there in those creeks? We measured chloride, and we also measured flow to just see how much is moving through the creek or drain at any given time. And so why did we measure all of these things? What is this going to tell us? Eventually, what we're hoping to get out of this and what we'll speak to again a little bit later today is have sewers and the watershed investments that have been made over the past several decades improved water quality. Where are the remaining sources of nutrients to the lakes and canals? And what further investments might be necessary to reduce those nutrients? So I'm really excited now, this is the fun part for me, to start talking about some of those preliminary monitoring results. And so let's, again, start with chlorophyll A. Remember that this is the algae pigment. So this is a rough indicator of how much algae is in a system. And this is inclusive, by the way, of those toxic species, but also there's a bunch of other good algae in the system, like things we do want to keep in the waters, right? So there's, you know, good algae and bad algae. Chlorophyll A measures all of that together. And so in this table here, as I've presented so far, this shows the results from that 1994 study. So results from chlorophyll A range from 10 to 32 micrograms per liter. And then if we click again, in 2024, we measured somewhat similar results. In 2024, chlorophyll A instead ranged from 1 to 26 micrograms per liter, depending on which site you're at. And what we've outlined here is a sort of qualitative comparison. Again, these are preliminary results. We haven't done any sort of statistical analysis on these yet. But if we're comparing these averages between these two years, 1994 and 2024, what we're seeing is that for many of these sites, the chlorophyll A was lower, if not much lower, than what we had measured in 1994. There are a couple of sites where it was a little bit higher, but generally, they're similar or lower, which is great to see. And if you click again, based on these 2024 results, the range of chlorophyll A that we're seeing lands us in that meso-eutrophic/eutrophic state zone. Moving on to cyanobacteria and the toxins that have been evaluated this past year. So thanks to sampling performed by the city and by the county Public Health Department, you know, they were able to go out on a few occasions this summer and sample the blooms and scums that we observed. So on four dates this past summer, they were able to collect samples and test those samples for cyanotoxins. And they were able to sample them from the Oya Hut Canal, just south of Lake Minard, from the Marine View Boat Launch, one from, and actually two, from Duck Lake. And from these four samples, what we found is that microcystin was detected and has been detected in multiple of these water bodies in the past. But this year, we only detected it in the Lake Minard and South Grand Canal sort of area, or excuse me, the Marine Boat Launch area. And there was only one exceedance from these four samples. And what I mean by exceedances, over the state guidelines and which institute a public health advisory. Basically, just don't come in contact with the cyanobacteria. Just one more thing on that table. The other cyanotoxin that's commonly tested is called antotoxin A. And what we'll see here is that it was tested a couple of times last summer, but we never detected it in those samples that were collected. It may be produced by some of the cyanobacteria that are in the system. We just did not detect it this year, and it's not something that has ever exceeded guidelines, the state criteria for issuing any sort of advisory. Okay, if you remember, I did say that we took some specific samples to see what species of cyanobacteria are out there? Like what are the specific types of these toxic algae that we're seeing? And how much of them are occurring at these different sites? You know, how does it vary between these systems? And so these samples, this graph shows the results of those samples. And so on the left-hand side, we have bio volume, which is a measure of just how much is there, right? So just quantity. And on the x-axis on the bottom there, we collected these samples on three different dates. Once in July, once in September, and once in November. And so you'll see an individual graph for each of these locations that we collected these samples at. And what we're seeing here is some of the highest amounts of cyanobacteria. And again, this is the toxic bacteria, not necessarily the good algae that we want to keep in the system. We're only looking at those toxic species here. We're seeing that the most that we found was from Lake Minard, but not consistently so, right? The amount of cyanobacteria in Minard reduced pretty dramatically if you're just looking at this qualitatively from July to September. But we saw additionally higher amounts of cyanobacteria at other sites, such as the south end of Grand Canal and in Duck Lake, particularly in the south end of Duck Lake, in the middle of Duck Lake, and a little bit in North Duck Lake. What I found pretty interesting is that there were no toxic cyanobacteria found on the north side of Grand Canal. So I mentioned that we looked specifically at like what exact types of cyanobacteria are in the system. I've outlined here the five species that we detected in the freshwaterways. And here on the right side, in that yellow box, those are the four species of cyanobacteria that are known to produce toxins in, you know, Washington and Oregon generally. And so those species include Dolica spermum and Microcystis. There's a couple of different versions of Dolica spermum in the waterways. Dolica spermum, formerly known as Anabena, that might be a little bit more, that might drag your memory, but it's now called Dolica spermum, is a filamentous cyanobacteria. They form like long strings, whereas Microcystis is a different form. Typically, those are really small and single-celled, so they look pretty different underneath the microscope. And I think we can advance to the next button. Yeah. So we found varying amounts of these different cyanobacteria species in different locations and on different dates, even at the same location. So I've zoomed in here sort of to Lake Minard, where in July, 100% of the cyanobacteria we found was the type Anaphanazaminon. Sorry, that's a long word. Anaphanazaminon, Blasacuay. And generally, in Washington and Oregon, that one doesn't, isn't known as well to produce toxins. But in September, when we tested next, most of the cyanobacteria we saw was Microcystis, which does produce toxins. So you can see how that varies. And I put a picture up here of that Microcystis bloom that we saw in the middle of Lake Minard in September. Similarly, toxic algae blooms can have different-looking appearances, right? So I have here two pictures, one from the sort of south end of Duck Lake, where it connects with Fish Hook Canal, and then the bottom photo is from the middle of Duck Lake. Again, what I'm pointing to here, these were two different types of blooms, or two differently appearing blooms, taken from this, taken from Duck Lake in September. Most of the cyanobacteria in these samples causing these blooms were the Dolica spermum planktonica species. So again, they can look pretty different. You know, we see in that top photo, in Fish Hook Canal, that can be pretty odorous. It looks like spilled paint. It can be blue. It's really thick and green. And you can really see the scum forming on the surface. But similarly, there was a bloom in the middle of Duck Lake, but it didn't look the same, right? So in that bottom photo, we can see that there's a lot of green in that water, like you can see the sort of particles floating around when you're out there in the water itself, but there wasn't a scum on the surface. Both of these photos show that there were cyanobacteria blooms occurring in these different parts of Duck Lake. And finally, we have some photos here from Bass Canal, and I just found it really interesting how different Bass Canal is from the rest of those waterways. The water color here is very brown. It's naturally very tannic. It's not necessarily, it's not a bad thing. It's organic. There's a lot of organic matter in Bass Canal lending to why it looks so brown. But that doesn't mean that there can't be cyanobacteria blooms in there, which we actually did see in September. So again, the types of cyanobacteria we saw in Bass Canal included that Anaphanazaminon. So again, the types of cyanobacteria we saw in Bass Canal included that Anaphanazaminon, but also the toxic Dolica spermum. So in these photos, we can see some scum, excuse me, some scums forming on the surface of that canal. And then we see in this other photo, it's a picture of the Sekida disc that we're using to measure water clarity. Even within that photo, it's harder to tell, but there were like little sprinkles of green throughout the water column there. So the cyanobacteria can still be in the water column, even if it's not extremely obvious. Okay, so moving on from algae and cyanobacteria into phosphorus. Again, phosphorus is that primary nutrient fueling algae growth. Again, here I'm showing phosphorus concentrations at all of these stations from that 1990s study. So in the 1990s, it ranged from 50 all the way up to almost 2,000 micrograms per liter. If we click the next one, we see the results from this 2024 monitoring project. So in 2024, these results, these averages range from 59 to almost 1,000 micrograms per liter. And so similarly to the last time, these bolded, these bolded stations, so Grand Canal, both north and south, Bell Canal and Lake Minard, concentrations in 2024 were much lower than what we saw in the 1990s. Yay. And for the rest of the sites, they were, you know, similar, somewhat lower, or even potentially somewhat higher qualitatively. Again, we'll do, we haven't done statistical analyses on this, but this is very promising. If you click that next button, despite how much lower some of the concentrations at these sites were, the concentrations of total phosphorus here is still really high. There's a lot of nutrients in these systems, even with the reductions. And so looking at these concentrations, we still see that the freshwaterways are landing in that hypereutrophic state. There's just a lot of nutrients inherently in these systems. So we didn't only, if you recall, we looked at phosphorus and nutrients in the lakes and the canals, but we also looked at phosphorus nutrients in the inlets, so in the creeks and those drains. And again, these are the 1990s results, still very high, right? In the hundreds to thousands of micrograms per liter. But if we look at the 2024 results, this study, again, a couple of these sites, the phosphorus was much lower. So this was in Clover Creek in Pacific, the drain at Pacific Boulevard. The phosphorus in those areas was much lower than what we saw in 1990s and were pretty similar at some of these other sites. But still really high. I think I have a button for that. If you click the next, yeah. So some of the, these sites still have really high nutrients, which somewhat explains why we're still seeing high nutrients in the canals and lakes. So overall, getting back to those initial questions that I asked at the beginning, you know, what will this monitoring tell us? So it'll tell us about the current conditions. The current conditions, as we found in 2024, still like KCM found in the 1990s. The freshwaterways of ocean shores are eutrophic to hypereutrophic. Lots of nutrients going on, lots of algae. The canals and lakes were generally warm with some low dissolved oxygen, really right near the bottom, where, you know, by the sediment interface at the bottom of these canals and lakes. But really importantly, again, high phosphorus throughout all of these systems, and those are what's driving the algae blooms. We found that there was lots of cyanobacteria throughout the freshwaterways, particularly in Duck Lake, Lake Minard, Fish Hook Canal, and Grand Canal South. And from the four samples that were collected and analyzed for cyanotoxins this year, we only detected microcystin in those samples, not antoxin A. And we had one exceedance of the state guidelines. And so getting at our second question, have conditions improved or worsened since the 1990s? Generally, what we're seeing qualitatively is that conditions have improved. The investments in the sewer and stormwater infrastructure seem to have been effective at reducing those watershed nutrients and reducing nutrients overall in the freshwaterways. This is great news, but the waterways are still very productive, very nutrient rich. So great jobs of. And finally, where are there further investments necessary and what are the remaining sources of nutrients? What we need to continue doing is managing and mitigating that high phosphorus. You know, and particularly that it was pretty high in Grand Canal, Lake Minard, and the Bell Canals. Why is it still high? Where do these continuing sources of phosphorus in the system? There's a few different sources. These are the same sort of sources that KCM evaluated back in the 1990s that we're evaluating again now. One of those types of sources can be internal. So what's already in, say, like example is what's in the sediments in the canals and lakes. Sediments can reduce phosphorus under certain conditions. Also aquatic plants and other debris can decay in the system and those nutrients are then released. So those are types of internal sources. There are also continuing external sources of nutrients to the freshwaterways. These include like creeks and stormwater drains. What we found in this preliminary evaluation is that there's high phosphorus in Oya Hut Creek, Clover Creek, and still in that drain that's along Pacific Boulevard. And again, there's high phosphorus in the groundwater. That is a major source, again, that KCM found in the 1990s, that over half of the phosphorus is coming from groundwater sources. And so where did all the phosphorus in this groundwater come from? Generally, we're, we looked back to the geology, to the history of this region. This is a very unique peninsula. This is a very unique area. And so what we found, digging through some of that history, is that there's deposits of ancient marshes and buried peat down there. And these are high organic matter type deposits. So the organic matter is leaching essentially phosphorus into the groundwater supply. And if we click one more time, what we know from the groundwater studies that have already been performed here is that much of ocean shores, the surface waters of ocean shores are in direct connection to those groundwater supplies. So the phosphorus that's coming into the groundwater is slowly percolating and making its way up to the surface. And, you know, even in the drier months, what's in the surface can percolate down into the groundwater. So everything here in this sort of like red outlined area, those, the shallow groundwater and the surface waters are very well connected. So what can we do to continue managing cyanobacteria blooms in ocean shores? So first, we're going to, and this is a major component of what's going to be in the freshwaterways management plan. We need to define some of those water quality goals. Generally, overall, and the whole reason we're here is because we want to reduce cyanobacteria blooms and the risks to public health and wildlife. And generally, we want to improve water quality here. And how do we do that? We list out some basic objectives that we want to make sure that are measurable and things that we can reach, things that are going to improve water quality and improve your use of the system. So we've outlined here some of those water quality objectives related to algae blooms. And these are based on ecology's listing criteria for what would be considered impaired water bodies. We don't want to meet that criteria, right? So we want to work on reducing the number of blooms per year to fewer than two. That's one. We want to work on reducing how long toxic algae blooms last, the duration of them. We don't want them to happen very frequently, but we also don't want them to last a really long time. So the duration of blooms, we're aiming to have less than three consecutive weeks. And we're also looking to reduce the number of years in a 10-year span that have algae blooms. So this hopefully isn't going to be an every-year occurrence, right? You know, maybe every couple of years, we'll have allowances for having algae blooms, you know, things happen. But we really want to reduce the number of years that have algae blooms. And this can translate to more numerical terms, again, looking at phosphorus nutrients, the chlorophyll A and Seki depth indices that I mentioned earlier that tell us what the trophic state of the lake and canals are. We want to be, if you click next, we want to be somewhere lower than where we currently are at, which is the eutrophic, hybrid eutrophic zone. What we think could be a reasonable target for us is somewhere in the middle to lower end of the eutrophic zone. And so very broadly, there are two management approaches we can use. One is controlling sources of phosphorus. We can, if we can reduce phosphorus at the source, we can reduce algae blooms. And this can include managing watershed inputs. This can include reducing the amount of phosphorus that's, that is released internally within the lakes and canals and reducing potentially, and looking at those groundwater sources. The other broad approach that we can use is mitigating the symptoms of algae blooms as they occur. So like mitigating the impacts to recreators and to wildlife from those blooms and the occurrence of those toxic blooms. And so if we're looking at controlling sources specifically and looking at watershed inputs, you click next. The improvements that have already been instituted over the past couple of decades, we've shown that they're working, right? So we can continue making similar investments and hopefully see continued improvements. If you click the next button, you know, there's still a couple places where sewers could be connected. The last numbers that I saw anyway suggest so. And there's additional actions, you know, we can continue as a community reducing the amount of phosphorus that's coming in through stormwater and that can be, you know, through infrastructure. And it can also be what you all can do, you know, in your homes. And if we continue building this list, clicking the next button, the things that you can do are reduce the amount of fertilizers that y'all, you know, use on lawns and, you know, in other businesses. If we can reduce the amount of phosphorus inputs that way, we can make sure that we're cleaning up our pet waste, which can be high in phosphorus. And we can also work on improving shorelines. And the fun part about improving shorelines is it adds habitat and reduces erosion. These are all really great things for the environment, planting native species and reducing the amount of lawns that go straight down to the water's edge. These things can all be really tangible efforts that you all can help us take. When we're looking at other sources like internal cycling and groundwater, the internal loading within the canals and lakes can be managed through some in-lake methods that I'm going to be discussing here in a few moments. I'll be outlining some of those options for y'all. But I want to also recall that most of the phosphorus here in the system is being introduced through the groundwater. And that's going to be really challenging to manage, right? So the sort of issue here with managing groundwater is that there's no point source that we can treat from. You know, we can think of drinking water wells, for example. It's one single point that you can pull up that you can treat. You can treat a single point. But when we're looking at all of the surface waters of ocean shores, it's coming in from everywhere. There's no specific point that we can really say, yes, we're going to look here and we're going to treat what's coming in at this point. It's everywhere, unfortunately. So that's going to make it really difficult. And really, logistically, there's no good way to do that without making some really extremely high investments. So it's just really not feasible, unfortunately, to try to treat direct, to try to treat the groundwater directly. At least at this time, we just don't have the technologies to do that. So on the other side, we've got potential options to mitigate the symptoms of the algae blooms that we're seeing. So not necessarily controlling the source of phosphorus, but mitigating the impacts of it. And so again, we can use some in-lake methods to mitigate the symptoms of algae blooms and mitigate, again, to mitigate the impacts of all of the phosphorus that we're seeing. But again, reducing the amount of phosphorus, reducing toxic algae blooms, but not necessarily eliminating them. And we can also use some of these techniques to reduce public risk. And so we're talking about things like continuing and improving bloom surveillance programs, improving our sampling programs, you know, including partnerships potentially between the city and the county on who and when is surveilling and sampling those blooms that are seen and continuing communication of those sample results and, you know, where blooms are. The waterways are so fast, right? That, you know, an efficient program can help detect where those blooms are occurring, how long and how toxic. And so we can mitigate the impacts to the public health by just keeping track of that and keeping y'all informed. And so we can do both. We can both work on controlling some of those sources and we can work on mitigating the symptoms of that. So again, continued watershed improvements, enhancing the sampling surveillance and communication plans. And again, using some specific in-lake methods. So what are some of those common in-lake management options? I'm going to start discussing here some very specific in-lake options, some of those common ones that are used in lakes elsewhere in Washington State and beyond to control phosphorus and algae blooms. The first one here is phosphorus inactivation. And so what phosphorus inactivation treatments do is that they remove the phosphorus available to algae from the water column or the sediment. If we take away that phosphorus, algae can't use it anymore to grow. There are several chemical formulations for phosphorus inactivation. This includes aluminum sulfate, lanthanum modified clay, and other proprietary blends. Use of these chemicals require permit, and the costs can range in the tens to hundreds of thousands. Typically, these types of treatments can last several years, depending on the water body. We would want to do some further studies specifically in these systems to see what the sediment chemistry looks like, for example. So we can get some precise dosages and we can estimate how long treatments like this could last and how frequently they would need to be applied. And this graphic here shows you a little bit more specifically about how phosphorus inactivation works in a system. So on the left-hand side here, all of those red dots are representing phosphorus in a water body. When phosphorus inactivation chemicals are applied, which are those little white bubbles in the center graphic, they're applied and they attach to the phosphorus particles, efficiently binding them so that they're not available, again, for uptake by algae. And in the final graphic here on the right, we can see that all of those little red balls of phosphorus are efficiently partnered up with those phosphorus inactivation bubbles. And those are bound in the sediment and can continue, excuse me, can continue to bind phosphorus that might be released from the sediments there as well. A second commonly used management method are called algicides. In the photo here on the right, we have algicides being utilized in Vancouver Lake in southwest Washington. Algicides are a really great tool for rapidly removing algae from the water column. It's useful for mitigating risks to public health. But one of the things to keep in mind here is it's not discriminatory. It kills both good and bad algae and can also be used to help treat fecal bacteria. They do not reduce nutrients, so it's not a source control. And it's not typically used for a long-term control. Algicides are typically only effective while the product is in the water. And that can last for a few hours up to a few days. So it's a really short-term local control, but it's very, very effective. Thank you. And yeah, so they can, just one, one last point on algicides. Depending on how often they're used, you can apply them a couple of times too here. But depending on how often they need to be applied, the costs can range from the tens to tens of thousands. As a next common management method, there's oxygenation and aeration technologies. And there are a few different types of technologies and systems available and have been used successfully in the past. The example that I'm showing here is oxygen saturation technology, OST, which again, is a very specific system. There are other types. But generally, what oxygenation or aeration does is it's more or less a permanent installation of technology at the bottom of a water body, as we see pictured here. This introduces This introduces oxygen through the deep waters throughout the summertime, which is typically when the system is up and running. And that's typically also when oxygen is at its lowest in, in the summertime at those bottom levels. So that's when we would turn some of these machines on. Oxygenation and aeration, they work by immobilizing phosphorus in the lake sediments. So by oxygenating those bottom waters, that allows the binding of phosphorus to other elements like iron that are already existing in the sediments. So sediment chemistry studies would need to be done to double check that there are those binding sites available already in the sediment, you know, such as like, that, that, making sure that there's enough iron for the phosphorus to bind to when there's oxygen applied. And as an added benefit for these oxygenation systems, this can improve habitat for fish at the very bottom of those, of those water bodies. And the cost range for something like this could be in the hundreds of thousands to potentially millions. And again, this is useful for very long-term control. This is more or less a permanent solution. This is requiring annual operation in terms of power and oxygen supply. But they, they can be attached to some like monitoring devices to, to work kind of like the thermostat in your home, where they supply oxygen when you need it, and they don't supply it when you don't. Another type of system commonly used is introducing mixing and circulation into the lake. And rather than binding phosphorus, like we've seen in some of these other management methods, the way these mixing and circulation technologies work is by decreasing the competitive advantage that cyanobacteria, that these toxic bacteria have over the good types of algae. So I mentioned that there's those two kind of classes of algae. We've got toxic algae, we've got the good algae. What this does is allows the growth of more good algae relative to the bad algae. So cyanobacteria really cleverly, and one of the reasons why they can form blooms the way that they do, is that they can change their buoyancy, right? So they can move up and down the water column at will, more or less. So they can hang out up at the top, gathering all sorts of sunlight. And then when it's not so sunny, they can go down in the water column, soak up all the nutrients that are down there by the sediments, and move back up again. Other types of algae can't do that. So that's one of the reasons why they, they can grow so well. By introducing more mixing and circulation, that disturbs that process. They can't migrate as efficiently. So it gives a better chance for those good algae to grow. And so this doesn't reduce the total amount of algae in a system, but it can reduce potentially the amount of those toxic species, which is really beneficial here. And these types of systems, again, and one of the examples of this type of technology is specifically a solar bee, which is used at the lake's surface. These types of systems can be really modular, and they can be more easily scaled, and some of them can even be solar powered. And these can range, some of those units can be rented, not necessarily purchased. So the cost depends on, on those types of programs, but you know, on the, you know, single to tens of thousands. Another method that I want to touch on is dredging. I know it's been discussed here in the past, and that's what was used to initially create the canals. Dredging is the removal of sediments as a source of that accumulated pee and organic material, that accumulated phosphorus. So again, I've heard some folks, and we heard from folks in the last public meeting about the buck that accumulates down at the bottom of those canals. And I know that there's interest in potentially, you know, taking that out and removing that sediment. And it has been a method used in the past to help manage algae blooms, because if you're removing the sediment from the bottom of the canal, you're removing all of the phosphorus that's trapped in those sediments. But there are also very real impacts to aquatic life during those periods. There's human use disturbances, like in terms of noise and recreation. You know, you can't use a lake or canal while it's being dredged like that. But dredging is also extremely costly, and in most cases, it's prohibitively costly. Most of the, the funds used in these types of programs go to de-watering and disposal of that sediment that you're removing. These types of programs are also really difficult to permit, and during and immediately after these activities, it can temporarily increase the phosphorus available to algae in the water columns. You may even see blooms after this has happened. And if we click the next button here, I also want to remind folks again that sediments in these systems are not the primary source of phosphorus in these waterways. So although removing phosphorus in those sediments could be somewhat beneficial, the phosphorus coming from those sediments isn't the, the key point that we want to, that we need to decrease in the system, the key source. And indeed, by removing more of that sediment, we may be actually creating deeper holes where the surface water can again interact with that groundwater. Groundwater is again where most of those phosphorus is coming from. So we're adding more opportunity for phosphorus to be introduced in that system, potentially through dredging. And finally, there's several additional options that we can continue considering. There are some experimental and emerging technologies that I've just listed here, and I'll get into a little bit more detail here in the next slide. But these are of interest because, and I, I title them experimental and emerging because they're not yet well-studied. We don't have a lot of case studies showing their effectiveness, or at least widely. You know, some areas, they, you know, show that, hey, these, these things are really, really effective at controlling algae. But at similar applications, they're not so effective at controlling algae, or they're just very unstudied generally. So we're considering these because we want to be open to potential methods that would be effective, and particularly cost-effective. We're just not sure how effective they are yet. We're looking for additional studies to show us that. But there's something that we're interested in considering. So these types of things include sonication. And I think we can move to the next slide, so I can show you a little bit more about what they are. So these technologies include things like sonication, which is using a high-frequency ultrasound to prevent algae movement. Again, cyanobacteria can move up and down the water column. By preventing that movement and damaging those cells, we can reduce the amount of algae in the system overall. This is one of those non-chemical solutions, but they have a limited radius. So we would have to put in many of these devices in a particular waterway to potentially control it. Ozone is another possibility. Ozone works by damaging cyanobacteria cells, and it actually works also by oxidizing the toxins that may be existing in the water. This provides potentially some good algae and toxin control, but there are also some safety requirements to consider. Micro and nano bubbles is a sort of new emerging technology. We're keeping an eye on this. It seems really interesting. Essentially, these are really, really, really small bubbles. So rather than like floating up to the surface and, you know, meeting the air and popping, these small bubbles disperse in the water column, and again, work to disturb cyanobacteria's competitive advantage over the good types of algae. And so again, these are like scalable. This introduces oxygen into the system, but it also requires a compressed gas supply. Other solutions are using straw, barley, straw or rice straw. We're not necessarily sure, based on existing literature, how this works. We just know that some systems have claimed that applying like straw bales to, to a system can help improve the amount of algae in a system. We're thinking based on available literature that this works by, when, when the straw decays, it can introduce certain compounds that inhibit the growth of algae. That's one of the ideas about how this works. We're still not super sure about how it controls algae, but some studies show that it works. So let's think about it. And finally, using things like dyes. You can, you can dye the water, and this reduces, this works to reduce algae potentially by reducing the amount of light available to them. And in that way, can potentially also control plant growth from those rooted plants, not necessarily floating plants. But there are potential impacts to aquatic life. And again, in these systems, light availability isn't really what's controlling cyanobacteria growth here. There's a lot of phosphorus. That's what's controlling cyanobacteria growth here. So, different mechanism. So, overall, the effectiveness of all of these in-lake methods can vary. We'll want to continue looking at these types of methods in the future to see like at what scale they would need to be applied, how much the cost, you know, how cost-effective and feasible we think it would be for any of the freshwater ways in the system. Generally, these will not reduce groundwater phosphorus. They can help control other forms of phosphorus that are already existing in the freshwater canals. And we also want to reflect too, that the freshwater ways are unique, and they all have their individual needs. So any one technology may not be the most appropriate for, let's say, a different part of the canal system, right? So we're gonna, there's, there's really no cure-all or quick fix for the system, which I know you were all hoping for. Unfortunately, I don't have that silver bullet, silver bullet option for you. But I'm hoping that with some of your input and some of, with, with the data that we've gathered here through this study, we can come to some good conclusions and develop a strategy together. So, one of the proposals that we're putting forward is to institute what we're calling management units, because Ocean Shores is so grand. Instituting management units, which I'll show more on the next slide, can help us address the unique conditions of each canal and lake area. It helps us personalize management goals and strategies for those specific areas. And using this type of system can also allow us to trial new or adaptive technologies that may not be suitable in, in other areas, essentially allowing like mesocosm-type experiments if we wanted to try something new. You know, I think the canal systems could lend really well to something like this. And we can compare and contrast the effectiveness of some of these different technologies. And so what do I mean by management unit areas? I mean breaking up the system into these defined areas where we can look at specific technologies to treat. And so I've outlined eight, yeah, eight, eight management unit areas that I'll show here. So the first one is the Lake Menard unit area, shown here in red. I know that the text is a little small, sorry about that. Second unit area is all of those Bell canals. Thirdly, we've got the full north end of the Grand Canal and the associated Little Fingers. Likewise, the south end Grand Canal and those fingers. Second, fifth, fifthly, we've got Fish Hook Canal and the south end of Duck Lake, and the fingers that lie off there. The cyanobacteria we saw in those sections really seemed to be similar. The next management unit area we have outlined is the middle of Duck Lake. And next, we have the north end of Duck Lake. Finally, Bass Canal. So now I kind of want to open it to the floor for a few minutes. I know I've presented a lot of material. I'm eager to hear from you guys. These are our thoughts about what potential management units can be. I'm interested to hear what y'all think. You know, should we be adjusting the boundaries of some of these management units? Yeah, ready to hear from you, from you all.
All right, Allison has the mic, and thank you, Allison, for running that around. And raise your hand, and she'll bring that mic over for you.
When you mentioned toxin, what do you mean by that? Like, is it when you touch it, it becomes poisonous, you get sick from it? Or is that what, what you, what you mean when you say toxin?
No, that's a, that's a really great question, and thank you for asking that. So when I'm speaking to toxins, these are the toxins produced specifically by cyanobacteria. And different species of cyanobacteria can produce different types of toxins. So the ones that we're talking about today, microcystin and antitoxin A, generally, you don't want to ingest them. They can cause illness if it's ingested. And high quantities too, if you come into contact with your skin, it can cause agitations.
It acts like an irritant?
Exactly, yeah. Okay. Like an irritant.
What we've been doing where I am is pulling the ones that are floating on the top, and bringing it up to shore, and putting it on the shoreline. So what it does is it decomposes, and as it decomposes, it kills the weeds and stuff that we don't want, but yet still stabilize the property. That's what we've been doing where we're at. And then the third thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, have you seen what Hawaii has been doing with, to clear up the, what we call the Aloha Canal? Have you seen that study, that workup?
I'm not sure I have, no.
Well, they use these microorganisms formed into these tight balls, and they've been doing it for three years. The water, when they first started, was very like what we have here. And nobody could go in there because it's an irritant that gets on your skin. But now the, the fish is starting to come in, which is a good sign. So maybe you could take a look and see, you know, what that has to offer. Like I said, it's like microorganisms that come in and clear the water up, which is what we want to do. We want to have fish come in.
We want to improve the water quality for all, absolutely. Yeah, and there's a, there's a variety of, you know, I outlined a few of those experimental or emerging technologies. I'm sure there are others out there that we could potentially consider as well. What I've outlined here is some of the most common methods that we, we turn to. But thank you for that suggestion.
Yes, the data you produced, of course, mentioned phosphorus over and over, and the groundwater. And as the data showed from 1994 to now, we have made improvements by hooking up to sewer, things like that. And my interest is more in preventative than, you know, what can we do even farther to get these numbers lower and lower? One thing I brought up previously and that you touched on also is the fertilizers. One thing we all know, and our golf course is a big draw, and it's a lovely thing to have in our community. But on the other hand, my concern is all this fertilizer that's going to the water. So my question to you, do you think that is an addition? But is there a solution? Have you looked at solutions on that side for different kinds of fertilizers? Or something we could utilize to keep that green and keep it a draw for, for tourists and everybody to come in, but help keep that phosphorus out of the system?
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, and I, I think overall, when it comes to watershed controls and looking at fertilizers, we want to be able to, you know, work with the, the landowners and the, you know, potentially landscaping companies that might come in and, and help work with some of these things is to make sure that we're not over-applying fertilizers. We want to make sure that what's going on the ground is staying there and not washing off. So we can look at best management practices on how to use some of those fertilizers, maybe different types, like you mentioned, but also in terms of timing, right? If we know it's going to rain tomorrow, maybe let's not apply fertilizer today, for instance. So, so those are some common things, and there's a variety of literature out there showing different types of these best management practices when it comes to using fertilizers to reduce the runoff of that phosphorus. And it's also more cost-efficient too, because what you're paying for in, in those nutrients to apply to, you know, say lawns and things, we wanted to say that. We want it to work where you're putting it, right? So I think it's a mutually beneficial thing to, to look at the types of products that we're putting into that, and, and seasonally, you know, when to apply these types of things, yeah. Thank you. I am, I see we've got one more question here too. I am interested to hear if there are any specific comments about what I discussed in terms of management units, if what we talked about in terms of those regions makes sense, if the whole idea of management units in general makes sense. I think what we heard in the last public meeting, was that something that we witnessed, is that these canals and lakes are, are pretty different? But I am interested, since you all are, are boots on the ground, more or less, if what you're seeing here reflects something of what I've said today, yeah.
So, thank you, and that's exactly what I wanted to address.
Great.
I thought that was the question you asked. I am part of a group who has, in my case, I spent most of, of eight years on the water, managing, keeping the waters navigable. And the management plan that you outlined looks very darn realistic to me. Those are all very separate environments, and they all need to be treated in their own individual way. And my opinion is you, Herrera, did a good job at identifying those. I wanted to riff on what Jane just said, and I'm specifically curious, and without seeing that slide in front of me, is the phosphorus level adjacent to the golf course higher than it is in the south Grand Canal? And I don't remember that slide saying that specifically. So that indicates to me that the true golf course management, the grounds management, is probably doing a pretty good job. That's the question I'm asking. That's the question I'm asking.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And, you know, I try not to call out any specific person. But yeah, we can, and we haven't done any statistical comparisons yet either. The comparisons that I've showed are purely qualitative at this point. We haven't had enough time yet to do these analyses. But just looking at the averages of those numbers, I believe, and again, I can't remember the exact numbers because we don't have it in front of us at the moment for any of you joining in online. But I believe it was the, the south end Grand Canal is where we're seeing a lot of those, the nutrients come into, not necessarily the north end. And to me, again, qualitatively, the south end makes sense because that's where the outlet is. So the rest of the waterways are flowing and accumulating to that one point. So wherever phosphorus is being introduced in the system, it's all going in, you know, at some point it's flowing through the south end. So qualitatively to me, that makes sense. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there are, there aren't, that there aren't other point sources in the watershed that could be evaluated and mitigated in the future.
Yes, go ahead.
I had a quick question and it is not about management units, but I think that's a very important thing because all of our canals are very different. And our waterway ecosystem is very different. But I did have a question on the water flow. So we talked about it before, the north end of the Grand Canal obviously looks better than the south. And I'm wondering if it's one of two things or if it's a combination of both. The, the first being is that the sediment that gets treated chemically. Is it drifting downstream and that's creating more phosphorus at the end of that? Or is it simply there's just not enough water flow as it gets downstream? And it's, the things are just settling there? Or is it a combination of, of probably both of those? And I just, here's your thoughts on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a totally fair question and thanks for asking that. I think it could probably be, you know, a hypothesis here for sure. You know, this isn't something that we're specifically studying. We haven't studied the flows in the lakes and canals specifically. But I would imagine that it's a combination potentially of both. Where just, you know, there's a lot of stuff accumulating there in the south end. You know, whatever is in the water column can eventually move down to the bottom of that end. So, you know, I, I would think it's a combination of the two, yeah. I will pause the questions there, but if we have more time at the end, I'd love to hear more. So if we could get back to the presentation, I have a little bit more content for you guys. So I'll take questions at the, I have one more question for you specifically and then I'll, I'll open it back up to the floor at the end here. So I talked about what some of the common management methods are that we would turn to for mitigating the amount of phosphorus in a system and mitigating the appearance of harmful algae blooms. But I know you're all wondering and you're all asking what are, what's feasible for ocean shores? I've already touched on some of these points, but I wanted to summarize for you some of the potential options that we'll be considering further in the freshwater lake, excuse me, in the freshwater ways management plan. So as a summary of these potential options, some of them I already prefaced to you. We're looking at phosphorus inactivation that works by binding the phosphorus in the water and sediment. I've spoken to how high some of the phosphorus concentrations are in various parts of these freshwater ways. These are a very efficient types of treatments and they can provide long-term phosphorus control. So that's really highly valued in a system like this where there's a lot of phosphorus that's fueling that algae growth. So by providing these treatments that can help control algae for years to come. There are some toxicity considerations, but when properly dosed and applied by a licensed applicator, those concerns are greatly reduced. But there are permitting and monitoring requirements associated with all that to really minimize potential risks to aquatic organisms from those inactivation chemicals. The other option that we'll continue considering is the use of algicides. Again, I mentioned that these kill algae. It's a very efficient and effective short-term control. And so these things, algae, algicides are really well-used in confined areas or areas where you see a lot of, for instance, public recreation to minimize risk to the public in short time spans and in smaller areas. But they're not an efficient long-term control option. Oxygenation and aeration techniques, they can provide enhanced oxygen in the waterways. This is a non-chemical alternative and can also improve fish habitat. You know, those are great to consider. And, but unfortunately, a con of this is that there's a need for continuous power supply, which means ongoing costs and it's not just a one-time cost. And again, the oxygenation, aeration, management option is contingent on the availability of binding sites for phosphorus already existing in, in the sediment. So we would want to do those sediment chemistry tests to make sure that those sites exist or even potentially add more of those binding sites. So for instance, applying extra iron if it's not already available in the sediment to make sure that there's enough area, enough binding sites to effectively control that phosphorus there. And so this is something that we can continue considering. These technologies are mainly used, it would mainly be useful, I would think, for potentially Lake Minard if anything, because the canals elsewhere are so shallow. The physical piece of technology wouldn't be able to fit in a canal, unfortunately. The next type of technology we're considering is, you know, types of mixing and circulation. Again, these disturb cyanobacteria's ability to move up and down the water column very efficiently. So you may still see green waters, but there may be less of the toxic species of those types of algae. So controlling the amount of toxins in the water rather than the amount of algae specifically. This is another non-chemical option and it's easy to install and is very scalable. But these are, these types of technologies, we have low confidence in their success just because there's, you know, mixed results from the studies that we do have. And one of the other ones that I mentioned here today is dredging. There's the removal, removal of sediment that has phosphorus in it. It's a good control long-term, but it's really expensive and we just don't think it's going to work here. It would potentially introduce more groundwater and that, as I said, that's where most of the phosphorus is coming from. So let's not introduce more phosphorus to the system and it's very expensive. So as the second specific question I wanted to offer to y'all, I've talked a lot about different types of management methods. We've already spoken a little bit about that in the questions. Are there any options that speak to you specifically? And your knowledge on the ground of what each of these presented management units look like? Is there anything that, you know, you would like to see in any specific management unit or is he used overall? Is there anything speaks to you or doesn't speak to you on the other hand? Like, is there anything that you specifically do not care for? I'm interested to hear y'all's thoughts.
I think, I thank you for coming. My question actually is concerning the algae growths that come in and treating in different areas. Have you considered the effect of what our grass carp is having and disturbing eating and when they're eating in the lower, especially during the low water areas of how they disturb the, the sediment on the bottom, which causes more algae to grow?
Yeah, thank you so much for that question. I would actually like to look more to see how many carp might be in the system. I don't know that number off the top of my head. So that would be really great to know. And it is a common problem and lots of other freshwater systems and lakes in Washington State where, you know, there's carp and we're concerned potentially about their impact. And, and one of the ways that they can impact water quality in terms of these nutrients is by disturbing the sediment and the muck there that you see down there at the bottom. Potentially by disturbing that muck, we see a reintroduction of phosphorus and other nutrients back into the water column. And that can be quite an impact if there is a lot of carp and there's a lot of disturbance in terms of the relative contribution of carp in, and introducing nutrients and even potentially like through their fecal matter and wildlife do or through re-suspension of those sediments. The relative contribution of phosphorus from those actions, we would expect to be pretty low in comparison of, to some of the other sources that we know we can control and that offer more phosphorus to the system. Thank you for that.
Hi, I got a couple of things. One is I had my own issues. I live on the south end of the Grand Canal and I won't get in the water. I won't let my dogs in the water because of the issues I had. And I see tourists come through in canals, through the canal, in their canoes and their paddle boards and they're jumping in and out of the water and they're whooping it up and having a good time and they should, they're on vacation. But all this talk about toxins has kind of told me in my mind that I was smart in getting out of the water. But I'm concerned about the tourists not knowing what they're getting into. Number one, if something should be done about that. And also I used to have a boat and I would go all over. And some of the canals I couldn't get into because the depth was too low. There was too much sediment in there. So if you're telling us we can't do any dredging, we're going to start losing some of the smaller canals because they're filling up with silt. I want to know what you think about that.
Yeah, thank you so much again for those comments and those questions. Related to the first part about making sure that folks are informed, particularly tourists who may not know, you know, as much about the local issues here. I, I see this as a real opportunity. Again, this gets back to what I was saying about two management approaches here. We can control and try to manage the sources and we can also try to mitigate risks to, to people on wildlife. And this falls into that mitigate the risks category where I see a real opportunity here to improve, you know, education and outreach generally about toxic algae blooms. Excuse me, but also locally, you know, have, there's an opportunity for tourists to, to learn more about how special Ocean Shores is and also learn a little bit more about the risks associated with some of the canals and waterways seasonally, what to look out for. I think we can, there's an opportunity here to, to improve our communications strategy and certainly involving tourists will, will be part of that, you know, as sort of this transient population. Again, that isn't necessarily here year-round and is as knowledgeable on how to find information about these things. So that's definitely something we'll be considering and including in the freshwater ways management plan. And then, and, and you're also smart, I believe too, I want to comment on that, to keep your dogs out of the water. And one of the taglines here is when in doubt, stay out. We want to make sure our, our pets and ourselves are all staying healthy. And remind me of the second part of your question. The, oh, yes, the silting in of the canals. Thank you so much. I think, so this would, I think, require some additional exploration of some of those canals and the, the specific problems that we're seeing in some of those fingers. We spent a lot of effort monitoring these waterways, but we had to choose some representative points. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get into all of those little fingers. And so our goal for this project is to generally manage algae, not necessarily manage silting in of the fingers. This is a valid concern, but wasn't identified as a project goal at that, at this time. I think it's worth additional consideration, particularly how it's feeding in potentially to the algae problems. And I think potential solutions to the silting in of some of these fingers. You know, some potentially small dredging projects could be evaluated to see what the impacts would be relative to the benefits. I just don't know what those impacts would be at this time, yeah. It would require additional evaluation. And I do just have a couple of finishing slides for us just to finish off the night and then I'm happy to continue taking more questions. But if there's, I think, one more question at this time, I can take it about the management options that I presented here today. Oh, I'm not sure the microphone is on for you. Oh, no worries.
So I saw a presentation earlier today from the freshwater management group where they were talking about introducing zero-valent iron into the dead-end canals, which is typically used by the wastewater management groups to do, to clean up the, to clean up the water. What are your thoughts on that?
It's a great question. So zero-valent iron is something that we've looked into, we've reviewed. I think it's a potential management tool and is a form of phosphorus inactivation. So I listed a few of those different types of chemical options earlier. I talked about using alum or aluminum sulfate. I talked about lanthanum and I've talked about other proprietary blends of phosphorus inactivation. Zero-valent iron is another potential option and it could potentially be cost-effective. It's something that I think could, that we can explore a little bit further in the freshwater ways management plan, definitely. And, but it's one of those things that will require sufficient amount of dissolved oxygen where we apply it. So we want, we would want to make sure that wherever this zero-valent iron is being applied has sufficient oxygen to be able to control and bind that phosphorus. So it's, as you mentioned, it's, it's another one of those tools we can turn to and evaluate to see which out of this array of potential phosphorus inactivation products would be best suited for this canal or, you know, the whole of this management unit area. But that's something we can consider, yeah, thank you. Last one.
So, and thank you. I first heard this idea from, I think Jeff Grill, one of our residents. In lakes that freeze, their dock owners oftentimes put a pump at the bottom of, under their canal that causes the water to circulate and then that allows them to leave their boat in the water for a longer period of time. If we adapted that and our lakes don't freeze, but if we, if several of the dock owners in the city had that type of a circulating pump, my question is how effective, and your slide indicated that would not be a primary effective, but if three quarters of the, there's 2,000 people on the lake, on the lake and the canals. So if the majority of us put that type of a pump in the water, what kind of a positive effect, and you may not have the answer tonight, but I would like to know when you conclude the report, what kind of a positive effect would that have? And what would the potential cost be for the homeowner to drive the pump, to electrify the pump? So that's my thought.
Right, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I, I saw a few out there while I was driving around today. So I can't speak to the cost because I'm not sure what the power rates are here specifically or how often these things would need to be run or even, depending on the specific type of pump that's used, costs can vary. So I can't speak to that today. What I could hypothesize, you know, at the end of these docks is that, as I mentioned, cyanobacteria could be disturbed, so you wouldn't necessarily see scums forming. But the effect would be really localized to those dock areas. It could potentially push cyanobacteria scums and cyanobacteria that's accumulated within the water column itself to other areas. It depends on how many, I think, pumps or circulation machines could be put in and how far and like what the radius of these types of pumps are. I think it's an interesting idea. I'm not sure how effective it could be. And as I sort of mentioned, there are different types of technologies and different studies showing that some of them sometimes are really effective at controlling cyanobacteria blooms. And sometimes other studies show that they're not quite as effective as they would like. So it's one of those exploratory options that we could experiment with. Right, I have just a couple of finishing slides to finish this up here tonight. So folks can leave promptly here in one minute or so. And I'd be happy to take questions for a few minutes after the meeting is concluded if there's any extras. So briefly, we've already talked today about the monitoring, our preliminary monitoring results from this 2024 and early 2025 effort. We've talked about some potential management solutions to consider in the freshwater ways management plan. Where are we going from here? What's left to do in this project? And so I've mentioned before, different types of things that we're going to be considering and outlining in the freshwater ways management plan. The freshwater ways management plan will be the grand conclusion to this project. The point of this plan is to outline near and long-term actions to manage the water quality in the freshwater ways of Ocean Shores that are in line with the identified goals and objectives. that are in line with the identified goals and objectives of, uh, improving water quality and reducing harmful algae bloom, uh, occurrence and risks to public health. Um, the scope of this freshwaterways management plan, again, this focuses on surface water quality. This plan will not include, um, uh, management efforts around fisheries, aquatic plants, drinking or groundwater quality or flooding. Uh, we will consider those co-benefits and consequences of, uh, different management actions on those different endpoints, um, and, you know, how they might interact. As I mentioned in the beginning of the talk, um, you know, there's a continuum to be had between, uh, the growth of algae and the growth of plants. So we'll want to make sure that we're striking an acceptable, um, you know, medium point uh, between, uh, these different types of endpoints. So we'll, we'll consider it, but it doesn't focus on, uh, these other benefits or consequences. Um, and what you can expect out of the plan, the components of this plan will again include a lot of background information. So again, going into the history, the characteristics of the area and the lakes and canals themselves. We'll talk about, um, what management actions have been taken to date, what the previous studies were and the current water quality conditions, which you got a little taste of today. Um, to start out in terms of, uh, looking at the management options, uh, and strategies for the freshwaterways, um, we'll be outlining some specific goals and objectives and how in the future we can compare, you know, what we can compare back to, to see, um, how effective these different management strategies are and how we might need to adapt, uh, these strategies in the future. So those success levels, uh, measures. And we'll be identifying some recommended management actions. Um, and, uh, that includes, uh, an approximate timeline and costs, um, for when to implement these different strategies and how. In addition, in the plan, um, we'll be including an adaptive management framework. Again, um, if we look back to our goals and success measures, if we're not quite, uh, as successful as we hope to be, um, we want to be able to provide a pathway forward where we can adapt the strategies, um, to try to, uh, to meet those goals as needed. Um, and a variety of appendices that will be just as informative and, and fun to read if you get that far in the plan. In terms of project schedule, um, we've developed and carried out the monitoring plan now. Um, as of today, we've completed the lake and watershed monitoring. Yay, so excited to see all the data compiled. Um, so that, you know, a, a big win for all of us. Um, and, uh, we're here meeting today. This is the second of three public meetings. We'll be back in May or June, once we've, uh, had a chance to draft a complete version of the freshwaterways management plan. And I'll be excited to return here, um, to speak to you all about what our recommended strategy is based on your input and the monitoring results that we've, uh, we've acquired here. And, uh, at the end of June, we'll be delivering the final plan. All right, thank you so much for being here today.
Any questions?
Do you, will you have some way to contact you via email or something to welcome any, uh, input on this that you weren't given tonight? Uh, some way to contact?
You can send an email to myself or to Scott or the mayor. And then we'll get the answers from Katie.
Yeah, they'll be easily, um, able to compile the questions. You may all have very similar questions, so, um, it would be really helpful for Becky to compile those questions for us and we can get a, an efficient answer out to you all. Yeah.
A quick question for you. The, the phosphorus is a key problem. What is the magnet for the phosphorus? The, the, the plants? The, uh, the biomass that's on the bottom? Is, is that where the phosphorus usually ends up going?
Yeah, so, uh, phosphorus, um, can end up in a, a variety of places. Um, phosphorus itself is, is a building block of life. We all have phosphorus in our bodies, for instance. Um, so there's, there's a variety of pathways that phosphorus can end up, um, in the waterways. It can end up, um, being, uh, assimilated for growth of algae, for example, like I mentioned. It can also be used for the growth of, um, plants, uh, you know, whether floating or, um, uh, you know, submerged and rooted. It can, uh, settle down and settle into the sediments. And there's other types of transformations chemically, um, that, you know, I won't get into the complexities thereof. And, um, it can also flow out of the system too. So it doesn't necessarily have to stay in the canal, it can go elsewhere.
I'm, I'm an engineer. I'm behind the, uh, the harvester that we have in Ocean Shores. And you, you don't want to tell me something can't be done, because I'll find a way to do it.
Sure.
But if you had the weeds and the biomass, if you could harvest that on a systematic manner, you could be reaping the pho- the phosphorus out of the water system. You could, you could harvest it year-round, section by section, and return the water through a filter of your magnesium or whatever, just like a fish tank, and help precipitate out the remaining phosphorus in the water. Would that be using the weeds as a tool to collect the phosphorus instead of trying to fight them?
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you bring that up. It's a valid question. And I think, um, harvesting aquatic weeds was one of the, uh, recommendations from that 1990s report. Um, certainly that biomass, that vegetation that's already existing in the system that does contain phosphorus. And by removing the vegetation, that would also remove phosphorus. So you're right, it is a method of reducing phosphorus in the system. Um, but what we're looking at, um, isn't just the phosphorus that's already in the system. There is continuous, uh, 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 additional loading externally. So even if you're controlling the phosphorus that's already there, there's still more phosphorus coming into the system as we speak, um, from groundwater and from, you know, creeks and drains. So controlling what's already there will help. But we're also looking at controlling things that are coming into the system as well. So it's, it's about finding the balance between controlling the things that are already in the freshwaterways, such as vegetation, such as the phosphorus that's, um, dissolved in the water column itself, um, and controlling the phosphorus that's coming in through the watershed in various ways. So looking at all of these sources. Relative to controlling groundwater, yes, um, absolutely. And I also want to reflect too that, um, you know, that's certainly a method to prevent. Uh, so, uh, when plants die, they release, uh, phosphorus back into the water column. By using techniques like phosphorus inactivation tools, um, or other methods like that, that control and sequester phosphorus, um, more or less permanently, we can reduce the amount of phosphorus that's, um, in the water column that's available to algae, which is, you know, just as a reminder, is the focus of this plan and this project is to make sure, or to, to limit the amount of algae growth. Algae can't use the phosphorus that's already in plants unless the plants are dying and re-releasing that into the water column. So, um, looking at, um, strategies to, um, time the management of, uh, algae with the management of aquatic plants, um, will be considered and is important. So for instance, if you're applying an herbicide that's killing a bunch of plants, um, that, we know that that's going to release phosphorus back into the water column. We can time that with a phosphorus inactivation treatment so that when those pho- that phosphorus is released, we can make sure it's not used by algae in return. So thinking about co-strategies like that, um, can, can be important for managing both aspects. Yeah.
Question up front?
So this question is kind of a little bit off topic, but it's very important, Ocean Shores. The biggest thing that I learned from your presentation, which was probably one of the best presentations I've seen in nine years.
Oh, thank you so much.
Uh, it's clear and concise and very, very informative. Anyway, to get on point, uh, uh, the thing that I learned, the most important thing that I learned is the source of our phosphorus is, uh, millions of years old peat bogs under the ground. I would presume that those peat bogs are affecting the well and the water in our aquifers because we also have, uh, a, a potable water high phosphorus problem. Uh, and so what I'm, I think I'm hearing you're saying, and I'm asking your opinion as a scientist, is that assumption correct that the phosphorus in our aquifer feeding our wells is attributable primarily to the phosphorus in those ancient peat bogs?
Great question and great connection. Um, that's our, our hypothesis at this time. I'm, uh, not specifically like a soil scientist or a groundwater scientist. Um, a lot of my expertise is in our surface waters. Um, but based on the literature that we've reviewed and the, the studies that have been done here previously, that's our main hypothesis for why there are so many nutrients in the groundwater. And of course, the groundwater is feeding the surface water and the groundwater is also used for drinking water. The groundwater is all the same source. So wherever the groundwater is going with a high phosphorus, you know, we're, we're seeing the same problem, uh, come to the surface in two different ways. But that's, that's our, exactly our main hypothesis for why there is such high phosphorus here in the groundwater is because of those ancient deposits. Yeah, thanks so much. Thanks so much for, um, all of you, again, for being here today and for all of your wonderful comments. Um, Jamie and I do have a three and a half hour drive ahead of us, so I'm going to cut this off here. But again, if you have any additional questions that, um, weren't already answered or, um, or that come to you later, feel free to reach out to Becky. She'll compile them and we'll get, uh, answers back to y'all. Again, thanks so much and we'll be back in May or June.
Thank you, Katie.